Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the September ninth, two thousand twenty five, fifth, uh, school board meeting. Uh, first like to say, uh, we have royalty with us tonight. I just want to welcome Dr. Jerry McGee. So you're looking around, you're looking around, it's you. So good, glad to see you back in Richmond County. Always glad to see you, Jerry. We have an existence of a quorum for tonight's meeting. Will this meeting please come to order? Baldwin, will you lead us in a moment of silence and our pledge of allegiance?
Sure thing. If you will, please stand and join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. Address the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Board members, you have, uh, the open minutes from our August twelfth and then our work session on August twenty sixth, and I need a motion to approve those minutes.
Make a motion.
Have a motion by Mr. Etheridge, a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Tillman, any discussion? All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Dr. Farrell is our agenda. Looking good tonight?
Yes, sir. No changes.
Alright, so under consent of the board, we will adopt the motion as is. And we can go right on to our business. Ms. Cameron Whitley, good evening.
Chairman Satterfield, Dr. Farrell, members of the board, signing the KICH 2025-26 Inspiring Excellence Award, starting with Richmond Early College and Angela McDonald.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to let me recognize two outstanding individuals who contribute to our school and make it a better place for all stakeholders. The Inspiring Excellence Award for Classified Member of Richmond Early College High School is Ms. Michelle Butler. Ms. Butler exemplifies what it means to juggle multiple responsibilities with grace and dedication. She has played a vital role in my transition to REACH, consistently offering support to both faculty and students in any way she can. Her positivity never wavers, even when faced with a flood of tasks. Whether it's managing attendance, handling fees, distributing laptops, or assisting with junior homeroom needs. Her warmth and compassion make her beloved by everyone around her. Ms. Butler's willingness to help no, help knows no bounds. She never hesitates to step in whenever she's needed, embodying the spirit of the REACH family. It is a true privilege to honor someone so deserving of the Inspiring Excellence Award. Congratulations, Ms. Butler. The Inspiring Excellence Certified Staff Member for Richmond Early College High School is Ms. Anna Sanford. Am I supposed to pause?
Keep going.
Okay. Ms. Sanford radiates positivity, kindness, and teamwork in everything she does. She is always the first to step up when someone is in need, whether it's a student or staff member. Her uplifting presence brightens the day of everyone around her, making her a cherished member of our school community. Over the summer, she dedicated her time to organizing and finalizing the details of a grant she received to create a pollinator garden on campus. This not only shows her commitment to her subject and students, but also her passion for enhancing our school environment. Ms. Sanford is a true asset to Richmond Early College High School and is a privilege to work alongside her each day. Congratulations.
Okay. Okay. One, two, three. Get closer, everyone. Perfect. Thank you.
Ms. Talia Sweeney, good evening. How are you?
Good evening.
I'm great. So you're here to present the Outstanding Secondary School Math Teacher, huh?
Yes.
Great.
Alright, Chairman Satterfield, Dr. Farrell, and members of the board. It's my privilege to, this evening, to recognize an exceptional educator who embodies the very best of mathematics instruction. Each year, the North Carolina Council of Teachers of Mathematics and NCDPI recognizes either an elementary or a secondary teacher for their standout work in math education, as they realize the importance of high-quality math instruction in our schools. This award allows us the opportunity to shine the light on some of our very own teachers, who exemplify teaching excellence through everyday classroom experiences. Today, we celebrate Blake Kelly. He's a seventh-grade math teacher at Hamlet Middle School, and he is our Richmond County's Outstanding Secondary Math Teacher for the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Here are a few thoughts about Mr. Kelly from his admin team. Hamlet Middle is proud to have Mr. Kelly as a dedicated seventh-grade math teacher who fosters the classroom environment that promotes problem-solving and collaboration, inspiring all his students to reach their full potential. What makes Blake Kelly truly outstanding is his ability to motivate students to excel in math. Mr. Kelly is not only a leader within his grade level, but also a respected figure throughout the entire school community. And his results speak for themselves. In the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year, he set a very ambitious goal for one hundred percent of his advanced students to demonstrate proficiency on the ELG, and he was successful. While this accomplishment is very impressive, it is actually his character that truly distinguishes him. When unforeseen circumstances left his fellow seventh-grade math teacher absent, Mr. Kelly stepped right up without hesitation. He supported the substitute teacher, and he personally provided small group instruction to those students, ensuring that their learning continued uninterrupted. And actually, I think he's had the unique opportunity to be, to have a new partner every year, since he started teaching, which really speaks to both his character and his commitment. So as a recipient of this honor, he will receive a one-year membership to NCCTM, a personalized plaque, and recognition at the state conference. And his name will also appear in the journal and on the website. So please join me in congratulating Blake Kelly, our Outstanding Secondary Math Teacher of the Year.
You know how much I hate you, just get closer out, like you like each other.
Blake, congratulations.
Yes, you guys.
Go ahead. Have our honorary.
Retired people in the back.
There we go. Daryl, scoot, there you go. Perfect. One, two, three. Thank you. Congratulations.
Dr. Kate Smith, got some great news concerning Winget Scholarship.
Yes. Alright, so good evening, Chairman Satterfield, Dr. Farrell, and members of the board. Last September, a year ago, um, I received an email from Ms. Heather Campbell at Winget University. She wanted to inform me of a program, uh, that Winget offers, and so we sat down, we zoomed, and the rest is history, and here we are. Uh, Ms. Campbell let me know that they had a donor, uh, who was interested in funding a college access and attainment program in Richmond County. And Winget would offer free tuition to students who complete this program. And so now, we're gonna take a few minutes to share the information about the Winget Wayfind Program and our implementation in Richmond County schools. But before I get into the details of the planning, uh, I would like to take a minute and introduce some key people who are gonna work with us to develop and plan, as well as contribute financially to the partnership and the scholarship program. So first, we have Ms. Michelle Lancaster. She is the Vice President of Strategic Partnerships for Winget. Michelle has been instrumental already in helping us over the past year, help us plan to a timeline, create an application process, um, and brainstorm how to make sure that our students are navigating this process in the best interest, um, of our, of our students. Um, we also have Ms. Dawn Terry, who has graciously agreed, um, to be our program champion facilitator. Um, her role will be to support the mentoring process between the Winget University students and our Richmond County students, uh, weekly, ensuring that the program is impactful and supported for all students. We also have Dr. Jerry McGee, President Emeritus of Winget University, and Mr. Danny Caddell. These are our generous financial supporters of the program for Richmond County school students, um, who have a focus and a passion for assisting students from their hometown, Richmond County, and supporting opportunities to continue the students' education. And so without your contribution, this opportunity would not be able to be funded, okay? So this is gonna be great. Um, and Ms. Maeve and I, um, we are going to be, uh, the ones who attend the meetings, make sure we track the progress, problem solve with Michelle, um, and just sort of communicate with Winget, so, um, this is the whole crew. I just wanted to make sure everybody, um, got to be up here while we talk about this. You all have a one-page flyer, and it does explain the program. Uh, this program is designed to identify academically promising students as early as the eighth grade, um, and put them on a clear pathway toward higher education. The Winget Wayfind Program focuses on first-generation college students, those who may be the first in their family to even pursue a degree. The program creates opportunities for access, mentorship, and readiness to ensure that these students are not just encouraged, but fully supported along this journey. Students gain mentorship from trained Winget University student mentors, and they will take part in a college readiness curriculum that will begin in middle school for our first cohort this spring, our eighth graders. They experience campus life firsthand through visits, activities, and their families will receive ongoing support to better understand the college process. And so once a student completes the program, they will receive a tuition-free scholarship to Winget University. We do have a recruitment application. I've given you just a very small glimpse into that because we are still working on that process, uh, but it's behind the flyer. Um, beginning just this month, we will, um, begin sharing this program through the charge of Ms. Terry, Ms. Dawn Terry, uh, with students and families through messaging, and she will host a family informational night at each middle school. Applications will go live September twenty-ninth through October tenth. December ninth, our scholar winners will be announced, and so our version of this program will be named the Caddell-Mghee Scholars Program to reflect the gratitude for your invaluable contribution for our students. And so at this time, I would just give you guys the floor. If anybody would like to have any thoughts or share anything, or any questions or comments.
On behalf of Winget University and our President Rhett Brown, I would love to tell you how honored we are to be able to expand this program into Richmond County. So we have offered this program for Union County Public Schools for about eight years, and so this is our first foray outside of Union County. And so we appreciate the partnership that we've had with this team, and we look forward to seeing all the great things that your students are gonna be able to achieve throughout the rest of this partnership. Thank you for having us tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd, I'd just like to say that, uh, both of us, uh, we blow a fuse, uh, we're brothers. And we blow a fuse every time because, uh, my name's Caddell and his name's McGee. And so, uh, just to give you a little background, Jerry's father passed away in a very early, when he was very, when he was young, and Jerry really never knew his dad. So, uh, our mother remarried, and, uh, Jerry kept his dad's name, but we've never thought of each other as stepbrothers, never. Uh, and, uh, we wouldn't be standing here if it weren't for our parents. And we grew up in Robertdale, and I can't to this day tell you, uh, why they had the vision for both of us to, uh, go on to college. But it was never an option. It was never an option. And somehow, they made it happen. And my reason for being involved in this is in gratitude to them for what they did for us, because I shouldn't be standing here. But, uh, we hope we can help somebody else and pass it forward, and, uh, hopefully they'll do the same thing one day. But, uh, it's, uh, sounds like a great opportunity, uh, and we can't save them all, but if we can save one, it's worth it. Thank you.
Dr. Brown and I are very close. Uh, he worked in the, uh, Heather Campbell Miller worked on one side of me, and he worked on the other side of me for a long, long time at Winget. And of course, Heather's from here as well. But when we first had the idea for this program, uh, uh, there were a lot of naysayers because it was gonna be very expensive, and a lot of students were gonna drop out along the way. And we kept talking about upward mobility, upward mobility, because we were all product of upward mobility, so let, let's do what we can. And as soon as this program started, and it started enjoying a little bit of success, I immediately started thinking, hmm, I know another place that would probably work. But when Dr. Brown and I have, having our monthly lunch one month, I said, okay, are we ready to expand the program somewhere else? And he said, I think so. Were you thinking Addison County? I said, no, just a little further. So, uh, obviously, I was always thinking about Richmond County, but, but we're so excited about this because we, we were blessed, as Danny said. But you know, there were a lot of kids at Robertdale and PD and Cordova and other places that were just as smart or smarter than we were, who didn't get a chance. And if we can provide eight or ten young people a year a chance to, to, uh, to, to live a better life and to get more education, then we wanna do it. And we're excited about participating. And we're excited about participating, so thank you.
I have heard about the program, and I'm so excited that you're here. And does it surprise me that you always remember Richmond County? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, thank you y'all so much. Wingate's true to my heart. I got a degree from there, like I was telling you, Dr. McGee. So we are fortunate that people like you are coming back to Richmond County. So thank y'all. And can we get a picture with y'all and start this advertising?
I just want to add, Robert Dale was true to my heart. So that's why I'm here today. I want to thank you for not letting it get ruined so bad as well.
And if I could too, I, you know, I'm alumni of Wingate, and I'm just proud and I appreciate the partnership, and I know Dawn is as well. So go Bulldog.
Come on, y'all.
They're going to have y'all, yeah.
One, two, three.
Now I can take your jacket off and not lay around.
I'm going to tell you one thing, that's impressive right there.
I guess I don't.
You're, I don't need to, you finished your.
She made eye contact. I guess I don't need to ask anymore. It's about right, once everybody leaves, I talk.
Well, let's do it right.
Y'all do a good job, y'all put me at the right, right part of it.
Well, let's do it right. Now we're having an athletic update from James Johnson.
Alright, so I kind of prepared mainly for Jenny, maybe, you know, Scott, and Paul, and Dan, that's what I'm talking about. I said, I don't know, I did some notes a few days ago, and I forgot what they said already. So I printed out, but I think as I was, as I was kind of looking at what I put down, a big thing was just growth. And I think we've grown in some ways that are maybe not measurable. You know, and some examples of things I thought about were coaches communicating with teachers and with the early college, and that was a thing that Dr. Farrell mentioned, and we changed leadership there as well, and just kind of letting those professors especially know because they operate a little differently. And our coaches have started, instead of waiting till hour before the game to send an email, some of them are now even two days in advance. That was, that was noticed at the high school as well, because, you know, those teachers were playing tests and exams and things, and all of a sudden five kids leave. You didn't know until the morning of, and that's tough on them. So that was something that I think most staffs have appreciated at both of the schools that we draw athletes from. You know, scheduling, our scheduling, an opportunity for our kids. We have a non-conference cross-country meet this week, and that's something that's not been done. We've had three non-conference tennis matches, and that's something that typically hasn't been done. Fortunately, all those were at home, so it was even, you know, even better for our kids. So we're growing in a lot of those ways. Cross-country had a, had a, had a late change in leadership in one of the teams. And despite that, I think we're seeing a little bit of growth in numbers now. Some of them didn't like the leadership change and left. And I think they might be running a little harder than they were before. Because Coach Miller, when I heard that first day, he got out on the scooter and it was, he was fully charged, and he chased them around and gave them motivational quotes the whole, the whole time they were running around in the lake. So I guess some of them liked it, some of them didn't. And then, you know, I thought something that was really neat this year that we did, and it kind of shows some, when I get to the end, it shows some growth in some other ways. But we scheduled like a rivalry week with Scotland where it's not a conference game anymore. So we, we made an effort with them to schedule as much stuff as we could. We played football and kind of, kind of hype it up a little bit. And during that week, they had a young man, a baseball player who was viciously attacked by a dog. And I don't know how it ended up, but it was, it was not good. And with basically a day's notice, our student government jumped in at the football game and raised $300 to kind of help support him and his family. So I thought that was, you know, something that a year ago, we probably wouldn't have made happen because I didn't know what I was doing, I didn't know the right people. I don't know if people were on board with trying to do anything other than just get a Friday night and survive and then repeat the week again. So I think there's, there's been a lot of growth there. Attendance has been really good. You know, I talked with Dr. Farrell some, and Scotty was at the game last night. Dr. Carter and I talked some about attendance and some of our numbers. Without, without going into a lot of detail, I'll just say Scotland played Dillon the first week of regular season of varsity football at Scotland. That's a pretty, that's a pretty big matchup. They're 30 minutes apart, two really good schools that play quite a bit traditionally. Our first J B game against Hoggard from two hours away made half of what their first varsity game did. So I think we're doing, doing really good attendance-wise. Volleyball's only played one matchup in the new gym, and part of that's because their crowds have been big enough, we feel like we need to keep them, keep them in the old gym. So I've been really pleased with our attendance kind of across the board. Soccer's done, done good as well. At the facilities, like obviously y'all have been, y'all have been a very instrumental part, you know, whether it's people within the county office or the board members. Y'all have been instrumental part of that. There's, you know, there's some other things that are, that are happening there that people may not know about. Wiley Maeve led a group of gentlemen who essentially put in a parking area between tennis and the practice fields. And so there's some, there's some upgrades happening that are even happening outside of this room that people may not notice, and I think will just continue to make our campus and our school and our athletic program better. So we're, we're growing, and I think we're already in a good place. But there's a quote, I know Scotty Baldwin likes it, so I'm, I'm going to give it to him. You don't have to be sick to get better. And I don't know that our program is sick, but I think it's definitely getting better. So that was the kind of things I wanted to touch on, if anybody's got any questions or needs anything from me.
Well, one thing you didn't mention in that Scotland County rivalry week, we beat them in every sport.
It's not really a rivalry, we swept.
Every sport.
J B, varsity, male, female, revenue, non-revenue, you name it, we beat them. And most of them weren't that competitive. So that's, that's always a good thing. I know we got a, pretty much everybody here is diehard Richmond County. So y'all understand what that means to us, so that was good. I just hope they want to keep doing rivalry week, you know, so they can, they can back out of it, and we have to find more games.
Coach Johnson, I'll just say, I appreciate the work that you, that you have been doing. I mean, I, you know, I, just like with other board, we see, you know, out, just like superintendent, like all the activities. So I really appreciate your work and the commitment to working with our middle schools. I know there's a lot of work that's going on there, trying to, you know, continue to bridge any gaps that may be there in trying to reach those kids and get them ready for high school.
And I think it's growing, some things there, you know. I interviewed this job a couple of times, and both times we talked about middle school alignment. Our A Ds are struggling with it more because of the people they rely on to do it, but they're, they're starting to do eligibility the same way we do it at the high school, and that, once everybody learns it, that'll help us. Because when children come from the middle schools to the high schools, all they're going to have to do is go in, if they've got active physical and all the paperwork's up to date, they can go to their account, they'll change, that'll be middle school to Richmond Senior High School, and I have their paperwork. And so that, that's, that's going to be a lifesaver for us on our end. And that's something that we've, we've helped the middle schools kind of pay for and taken off of their plate in exchange. We'll, we'll run a middle school track meet or two for them and kind of help them with that. Middle school jamborees, we had, we had volleyball last night, football's tomorrow night. So we will have a three-half game, Southern Middle Schools coming from Southern Pines. We managed to get them to come down, and they kind of didn't want to at first. Chad Hill's there, who a lot of us know, and I worked with her middle school A D, or one of them saw him when I was at Pinecrest. So we're able to convince them, and hopefully we don't hurt them too bad, and they'll, they'll come back again next year, but we'll see how that goes. So I think that, that's, that's been a good thing, and I think they're trying to grow and get better too. And we're all, we're all learning how to do it together.
I was at Rocketham Middle School the other day. I'm a volunteer golf coach there. There were 13 kids that came to try out, which we hadn't had 13 kids in three years I'm out there. But there was a lot of football kids, a lot of volleyball kids. It was just great to see the numbers out there that day.
We could, we could grow those numbers. That's, you know, that's one spot where, and we had to transition to another late hire there, and that's, we lost a lot of seniors in girls golf last year. So that's one spot where our roster's a, our roster's a little smaller. But Jeff Hewitt called, we're playing at Pinecrest today at number six in Pinehurst. And he called not too long after they got started. And one, he was, he was pretty happy to see, you know, Kevin Wallace is coaching that for us. And he said, well, how much you have to pay Kevin to get him out here? Whatever that supplement said on the contract. I said, but I said, he actually came to me, and he's been a really, you know, he's been a really good hire in that spot, and he understands the administrative side of things and has helped with that. But Jeff was really complimentary of the few we have out there, you know, being out there. And I think we'll be, you know, obviously Pinecrest is always tough in golf, but we'll be a very competitive team in our conference against boys. We hear there's some coming.
Appreciate what you're doing, keep it up.
Yes, sir.
Go Raiders.
Thank you.
Facilities look great, and we've got exciting things coming up.
Just got to take care of them. Got to keep, I'm going to go home.
I know.
I just go home, you come back, things look different, all the stuff.
I feel your passion.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Reach School County Revision, Dr. Smith again. You're busy, young lady, tonight.
Good evening Chairman Satterfield, Dr. Farrell, and members of the board. We need your approval for a calendar change for Reach. Their graduation date currently is set for May 21st, 2026, and we need that moved to May 22nd, 2026. Just move from a Thursday to a Friday night.
I'll make a motion to approve the move as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Baldwin, a second. Second, by Mr. Mason, discussion. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I guess graduation will be now May 22nd now.
Thank you.
You go again?
Yeah.
Yeah, you go, look at that, sure do. Support of Community Schools Model in the Sandhills, Dr. Kate Smith again.
Alright, so good evening Chairman Satterfield, Dr. Farrell, and members of the board. We are excited to bring to you all and our community some news about a new school model that has the power to transform not just our school, but our entire community. And it is called the Community Schools Model. Each of you has a folder with various informational pieces, and I'll go through a few of them in just a minute so that we all understand exactly what this will mean for our district and for Washington Street Elementary School. So if I could first bring your attention to the Community Schools flyer that is in your folder, and it looks just like this. This flyer is very informational. The North Carolina Community Schools Coalition, which was launched in 2023 through a grant with the Department of Education, aims to improve the academic, mental, and physical health of North Carolina students. Community schools are an evidence-based approach to improving schools identified as chronically low-performing. Community schools are public schools that partner with families and community organizations to remove the barriers to student success through aligning supports through volunteers, medical clinics, basic need pantries, and other priorities. And so you'll see the real four pillars of this model at the bottom of page one. Community Schools Coordinator Position, that position has been posted. The Formation of a School Advisory Board that has various stakeholders that will participate. A Family Resource Center, and Partnerships and Programs to Support Our Students. And so as you all know, many of our families in Richmond County face significant challenges. Poverty, limited resources, lack of access to basic services, and these things often stand in the way of student success. These barriers don't just affect academics. They affect attendance, behavior, health, and even the ability of families to feel truly connected to our schools. And so secondly, I provided you all in your folder with the Richmond County Data Card as well as the North Carolina Data Card to show you why this community schools approach is so necessary for Richmond County. I'd like to highlight for you all just a few data points that directly affect our students and our school data. Preterm born babies, children living in poor and low-income homes, children in households that are food insecure, delinquency rates, and certainly children assessed for abuse and neglect. And without a doubt, I know that you all, as either former educators yourselves, someone who works directly with children and families in another capacity, and who have immediate family members that are educated, that are educators. You all completely understand that a county's access to resource and lack of resources directly impacts what's happening inside of a school. And so for this reason, partnerships and family involvement are hugely important for our students and staff. And so for this school year, we will pilot this community schools model in one of our schools, Washington Street Elementary School. Why do you ask Washington Street? Well, because we know that at Washington Street, just like all of our schools, we have teachers who care about kids and understand that there is a need to have more involvement from the community and families. And so I'm going to let Ms. Gunnels, the principal, speak at this time, if you would like to just say a few things.
Good evening. I just want to say that we're grateful for this opportunity. You know, we operate as leaders with just all things school improvement, right? We rely on our community. We would like to build that relationship with our community. I feel like our kids need that, they need that additional support. And I'd like for our community to see us as a resource as well. Also strengthening our kids academically, that, and socially, emotionally. We feel like that there needs to be that partnership. So, you know, having an additional staff member who is minded around all things that we need based on the data that we collect, the plan that's implemented, and of course, that school advisory board would oversee all things that, you know, that, that, that team would decide to implement. And again, we're grateful for it, and we appreciate any support.
And I'll just say that Angela Gallagher, our Director of Student Services, she's from Scotland, so she didn't feel comfortable coming up after the last presentation. I'm just kicking off her. But no, she and myself will be the ones that will, I had to get you, Angela, sorry. She and myself will be the ones that will attend meetings monthly with Ms. Gunnels and with the leadership of the Coalition to make sure this is implemented and progress is made and all the things, so.
I have no doubt it will be successful with Deana's leadership.
Right.
That will be fine. She'll be, she'll be great. So thank you for what you do, and thank you for a great opening to Washington Street School, yeah.
I have two things.
Yeah.
One, the, um. Alright, well, I'm very supportive of this. I think it's excellent things I counted. And I looked at your bullets down on the first page. I'm a real advocate for community support. So I'm glad that on the purple one where you've got Student Advisory Board, you've got Community.
Yes.
That's so important.
Yes.
That you have them on that board, and they are, you have their, I feel like if you get them on the board, they'll be, they'll be in support of it. But it's a wonderful program. Oh, I remember, my other question was, the person that we hire, is it for one year?
Do they tell us?
That's my understanding of the rollout. They haven't talked beyond the one year.
Yeah. I, I haven't heard anything past a year. Ma'am?
The program can continue.
It can spread throughout the district. We can pull in more schools. Yeah, the Sandhills region, as a matter of fact, I believe this year, the entire Sandhills region is coming over.
Yes, that is correct. That's what it, that's what it looks like on the map.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, we're hoping to spread.
Again, we've got to have community, community support. And I, I just think that the things you hear in the community now, when you go to events and all, I think they're very positive to our schools, so I don't think we're having trouble with that. I just, that would, that made me excited to know that you are going to put them on the board. Thanks.
Dr. Smith, quick question. So, so with the.
Dr. Smith, quick question. So, uh, so with the, the position that we have for this coordinator position, the funds are coming from the Sandhills organization for this position?
It's actually coming from the Coalition.
From the Coalition, okay.
Yes, this is all a grant funded through the Department of Ed.
Okay, now, is there like, how do we look at outcomes of, of this program?
So the, the actual, the people that come, that come here and meet with us and help us sort of plan and organize all the things, they will be the ones that help us decide what it is that we want to achieve. And certainly the implementation of the School Advisory Board, the implementation of a Family Resource Center, and the partnerships and programs that we create this year are really the outcomes. That's what they are really looking for us to do, is have community outreach, more family involvement, positive perception, those kinds of things.
And if I can just add to that, also on the flyer, there's data collection that happens along the way. And so they actually share with us that they have to report back to their, their, their resource of funding as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions for them?
No, not for me, but if I would, if I may give one quick shout out. If you look at the map that Dr. Smith provided, there, this opportunity is sprinkled across the state. You notice that when it gets to the Sandhills region, though, it's all of us. And the, the shout out that I'd like to give is, you know, our regional director is Dr. Ron Hargrave. And we go to our monthly meetings, and he does a lot to support us. And what he'll do, what, what I have found that he does in advocacy for our school districts is, you know, someone will come and present a great new product, or a great opportunity, or a grant opportunity, or something like that. And then Ron has absolutely no shame in saying, we all want that. How can we make that happen? And so he deserves a lot of credit. I know he's not based in Richmond County, but he deserves a lot of credit for bringing this to our entire region. Because he, he pretty much said, yeah, we, we'll get you to come in here and listen, but we're gonna all have this opportunity, right? And then they start trying to figure out ways to do that. So if you know Dr. Hargrave and get an opportunity to say thank you for his advocacy for our district and this entire region, it's, it's really, it's really impressive to watch what he's, what he's able to do.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Policies for approval. Devin Ingram.
Good evening Chairman Satterfield, Dr. Farrell, members of the board. In Board Docs, you have a list of policies presented last month for review. This being the conclusion of the thirty day review period, I would like to present these policies for adoption. Sixty-two twenty, operation of school nutrition services. Sixty-three thirty, insurance for state student transportation services. Seventy-one hundred, recruitment and selection personnel. Seventy-one thirty, licensure. Seventy-three thirty-five, employee use of social media. Seventy-three forty, employee dress and appearance. Seventy-eight twenty, personnel files. Ninety-two ten, care and maintenance of grounds and outdoor equipment. And twenty-three oh-two, remote participation in board meetings. Twenty-three oh-two has, has been submitted by Ms. Dubson. And reflects the feedback that we, that we were given during the last board meeting.
I need a motion to approve the policies presented.
Same move.
A motion by Mr. Baldwin. Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ornsby. Any discussion? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? They are approved. Mr. Ingram.
Policies for review. In Board Docs, you have a list of policies that we would like you to review for a thirty day review period. Thirty-four hundred, evaluation of student progress. Thirty-four twenty, student promotion and accountability. Thirty-six twenty, extracurricular activities and student organizations. Forty twenty-three, seventy-two thirty-three, pregnant and parenting students and employees. Forty forty, seventy-three ten, staff-student relations. Forty-two forty, seventy-three.
Uh, here to do this, this is one of the policies, right?
Yes.
And I just, I need some clarification. Got a couple of phone calls concerning, a request to have a funeral on one of our campuses was denied. And it's, and they said, according to the policy, it was not allowed. Well, as I read through the policy, I don't see where it's not allowed. As a matter of fact, we just allowed a funeral on campus in July. I know we've allowed funerals on campus back then when Ms. Trina Crowder, one of our former students, died in an accident. We allowed a funeral to be held at Richmond. And I just need some clarification, because what I was told is not written in the policies. Something about you have to be, we're only renting to allowing certain organizations, nonprofit organizations, to rent our facilities. And I just need some, I think the public needs some clarification on why these individuals were allowed to have funerals. And I'm, I'm referring to Nick's, uh... Ratliff family. They're trying, they need clarification of why that these other people were allowed to have funerals, and their, their, theirs request was denied.
Um, I, I can give you a little bit of information, and I might need to phone a friend over here in the legal department. But, so back, I'm not sure, I'm not sure about the second funeral you mentioned. Now, the one that happened this summer.
Well, two, that was in two thousand nineteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, somewhere around in there.
Okay, so, and when I first got here, not long after I got here, there was quite a bit of discussion going on about whether or not funerals on our campuses should be allowed because apparently there had been a shooting or a death here in the community, and there was some fear of retaliation that might or might not take place at the memorial service, and whether or not that would be on one of our school campuses. So that was, and I don't know all the details of that, but that was a pretty big discussion point. So at that time, we actually, at Therrington Smith, we were talking with Steve Rossen. And so we reached out to him and talked about what this policy should look like. Should we allow funerals on campus at all, campuses at all? And if so, should we put any kind of guidelines on that? His, his recommendation at that time was to, to put certain things in policy and certain things in procedure to implement the policy. And so it was decided at that time that we would allow funerals and memorial services for current students and current staff members if it was requested. So like, for example, the July funeral that took place at LJ Dale was a current fifth grade student. And so that's why that one was allowed. So, but as I was talking with Cameron Whitley this morning about just the, just funerals and memorials, memorial services in general, you know, I, one of the things that I have on my list to mention, to talk with Eva about actually, is whether or not it should be stated in policy that we would allow, that we would allow it only for sta, current staff members and only for current students. Because it does not currently read that way. We have just had that in procedure. And we have denied a number of requests for people who were making that request for non-current students and non-current staff members. And so this, this one for Mr. Ratliff is just kind of the latest one that just popped up. And so the other thing is, and I don't have the exact language in my head, but the other thing is, there is langu, my understanding is there is language in there about the nonprofit piece.
Right.
And so...
Yeah, so your policy only allows rentals to nonprofits, civic organizations, charitable organizations. And so, and not to for-profit businesses. And one reason for that is the Amstead Act and not be in competition with for-profit businesses. And so one thing that came up, as Cameron did mention this to me, is when a funeral home is seeking to rent your facility, like, that's a for-profit business that wants to use your facility. And so that was another aspect to it. But you're right, your policy right now doesn't mention funerals and memorials, and you could certainly clarify that. I shared with her the, just a minute ago, the Poughkeepsie County policy that I worked on last month. And that was something that they specifically wanted to add. And so, because, so they, their policy specifically says current staff members or students, funerals or memorials can be held without charge. So it's, I mean, it's the board's decision. I think part of the discussion is, in some communities where you have like the largest cheapest space, it can become a problem if it's, you know, becomes known that that's available for, for any funeral. But yes, you could certainly add that to policy as like, we make an exception for current staff members and students.
Well, if it's a procedure that we're using, I would like to see that procedure put in the policy. So at least our public will know what's going on, don't have to, like, don't have a guessing game of why, why or why not.
Right. And, and, but as far as the funeral home goes, I think that's not a correct statement. Because when a family has a funeral, it's not the funeral home that's renting the facility, it's the family. The funeral home only is responsible for processing the body and maintaining the body. It's the family and the church that actually, in this case, for sure, the church is reaching out to rent. But they have a nonprofit, and they're, they're wanting to rent the facility in order to have Mr. Ratliff's funeral. And those who, you know, Mr. Ratliff was a star football player here in Richmond County, had the opportunity to go D1. I'm in a, I'm in a chat with his former teachers at Rockham. And all those teachers are just, you know, just memor, just going through memory lane. And thought of what a great person he was, and it was sad what happened to him. But it's the church that, which has a nonprofit that wants to rent our facility. It's not the funeral home. Only the funeral home does the transport.
I'm sorry, but the funeral home did contact Cameron?
Huh?
That it was the funeral home that contacted Cameron to rent the...
On behalf of the church.
I don't, I don't know that.
Yeah, from what I understand.
Ferals can be done many, many ways.
Yeah, but that was on behalf of the church. But I just, I just think the public needs clarification. And like Cory said, I think it needs to actually be written into the policy. So there's no question, doubt about why this was allowed, why this wasn't allowed. But that was before you got here, two thousand nineteen with Trina, which was also one of my former students. And they were allowed to have the funeral at Richmond Senior High School, which was a huge funeral. So, and the family just didn't understand why one was allowed and the other, and they're being denied. And so just needs that clarification.
So Mr. Ingram, can we get that policy up and see if we can make those changes and put it into the next meeting, if that's okay?
Well, um, with this being the policy, if we talk about, I mean, if we do it, it's still no charge.
So right now, what your policy says is that it depends. So this would be considered, assuming again that it's a, either family or church, a nonprofit, a non-for-profit, that they would be charged a rental fee and custodial fees or if, you know, staff fees if they require staff, and often they do.
They have to, they have to have security, they have to have custodians, they have to be...
Kitchen fee if they want to use the kitchen. So yes, there would be a charge. Unless, unless you modify your policy to say that certain groups would not get a charge.
Just to open a whole nother can of worms on this, if it's in fact a rental, are they covered under our liability insurance? Or is that, if it's a rental, because, or do they have to have event insurance?
I think they're supposed to have their own.
They have to provide certificate of insurance. Any renter has to provide that.
So if it's done by a church, the church would have insurance, hopefully.
Well, I can't remember now.
If it's a funeral home.
I think it was for...
It's Saturday.
I do think it, since there's been some conversation that we might, it needs to be put in the policy, so that we...
Yeah, and we had, yes, and there was quite a bit of discussion with Mr. Rossen at the time. And, and at that time, it was agreed that we would leave it in procedure. But it hasn't been, it hasn't been, well, and it's like anything else, it's not an issue until it's an issue.
Yeah, right.
And so we, we just put it in procedure, and to remain consistent, we have consistently denied anyone making the request that's not a current student or staff member. And that, and then this, this morning when Cameron and I were talking about it, I said, you know, Cameron, I think I'm just gonna run it by Eva and just make sure that she feels as, because she was not our board attorney at the time, just to make sure that she agrees that it should remain in procedure and not in policy. Because once it's in policy, it's a lot more clear.
Did you say what you thought? Did you think it should be procedure or policy?
Well, now that it's an issue, I don't think there's any harm in putting it in policy. I think that if it's in policy, then either, so the, the way it would read is, for instance, that, you know, funerals and memorials for current students and staff, you could put without charge. You know, and then we would discuss how you want to clarify the rest of it, whether you want to say, you know, only students, current students and staff. I mean, it's your policy. You can have whatever policy you want.
Sure.
But then, unless you put in the policy that the superintendent can grant waivers, anyone who wants an exception is gonna have to come to the board. Now, it doesn't seem to have come up much before.
I know for me, I, I think, I agree that it needs to be in policy. That way it's black and white. And then, because when you're looking at procedures, I mean, that can sometimes put you in a gray area. And so I think when it's in policy and it's clear in policy what the, the rules and expectation is, and it just, it's easy for everybody to understand. But I, you know, that's something we're gonna have to think about, because I mean, you know, I know for me, if, if someone wants to use the facility that may not be a current student or something like that, I don't have a problem with you using it, so as long as it, they go through the proper channels and, of our policy. Because I mean, you know, I'm thinking about this situation with this kid. I coached this, this young man. And like, and, and this is the first I even heard about the issue with not being able to use our facility. To me, it, it would be a major slap in, if, I'm putting myself in this family's position. And, and if it was my own kid that contributed to this school system, and, and due to the unfortunate nature of this kid's situation with losing a mother in a tragic accident that wasn't, I mean, just unexpected. And then to have a life-changing situation that turn him, turns his whole life around. I don't have a problem with whether it's him or any other student that was a part of Richmond Senior High and their family using our facility. So as long as they follow our processes. That's just me. And I'm, I'm, I'm using, you know, using that as an example, but I always try to put myself in a sit, in a person or family situation. But I do think we need to look at the policy and clean it up and make it clear, if it sucks.
Are the procedures on the website?
No, I do not believe so.
Okay. Certainly the policy does authorize the superintendent to develop procedures and processes, application process, all of that. So I don't think it's a problem that it's in procedure, but it is the board's policy, and you can make it say whatever you want.
Does the community have access to the procedures? Is that, do they have access?
If someone asks for those, we would give them, but we don't have them posted anywhere.
Yeah, so, so that's why, that's where the confusion comes in. It's not posted. So they have no clue that this is procedure. So we need to put it out where, that anytime they start to read about renting our facilities, and these are the procedures and reasons, you know, I think it needs to be where the, the public can get their hands on to it.
And, and I, I believe, I'm, I'm with Ronald on mostly everything. I do think that if, if it's a current student or a current faculty member, definitely think that we should be able to open up our facilities under the rental agreement facility that we have. I, I, I want to think more about if it's a past, a past employee or a past student. I just know that opening our facilities up constantly, it's a lot on the school administrators, the school as a whole. It could become rather big if one person sees it. It could become rather big if one person sees it and more people see it. I, I'd like to see a little bit more constraint on that policy when we do it. But I do think we have to have something in policy that says we have, that we, we can do funerals. We won't have this gray area, we won't have somebody coming to us saying-
And keep the fees in place?
Huh?
Recharge.
That's something that we would discuss.
Yeah, I think, I, to me, that's something we've discussed.
Your current fee is a hundred dollars for a K A auditorium and two hundred dollars for a high school.
I mean, I think that's reasonable.
That pays the custodian, the security and all that, because then we are paying that stuff, and we're not getting in the business of paying for that, but.
So, are you, you're gonna send, we're gonna look at the policy, and we're not, are we deciding right now?
No.
I was just trying to get some guidance, just where we're, where we're, you know, where we're going with it.
Yeah, we've updated this policy with the board since I've been here.
I would like to see event insurance defined in it too, if that's not, because that's from the liability standpoint.
I didn't hear you.
I would like to, like to ensure that event insurance, so it would be the responsibility of the using party to, to provide their own event insurance.
Looks like right now, your regulation requires insurance if they're using it for athletics, but not for other types of programs.
Slip and fall is a slip and fall.
And I'm okay whatever the board decides, I, you know, I'm just one person making a comment, but, and I'm okay with whatever they do.
So, we're gonna pu- make sure I'm clear, so we're gonna pull that policy. I guess Melvin, the superintendent, uh, emailed that to us, was offering feedback, our feedback, kinda like what we did with, uh,
I would let, yeah, I would let Eva play around with that, that policy for a little bit, and maybe give us-
We'll bring you maybe some options.
Give us some options and then look at it and go from there.
I think that's good.
But we, we hold under the pr- the procedure that Dr. Farrell has in place for Richmond County Schools right now. Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Ingram. You thought you were getting out quick, didn't you? Comments from board members? Mr. Etheridge, you were more than welcome to go first.
I had the opportunity to, to visit all the schools, and it was interesting to see different people, different locations, and have to remember where they were, you know, comparing to what they were last year. Uh, I also had the opportunity to go and watch the inaugural JV ballgame and vo- and the varsity volleyball game in the new gym and see us successful over both of them. And then I, I was able to go to the Scotland County game, uh, wasn't able to go to the, get last game. Uh, another situation, I had the opportunity to go to, uh, Carson Oldham's funeral. I'm not sure exactly what, what date Richmond County Schools started as Richmond County Schools, but I know it was in nineteen sixty-seven. Carson Oldham was the, uh, principal at Hamlet High School that year. He had, uh, uh, Haltonger, W L Haltonger, had been there from probably thirty, forty years. And then he, it went over to that year, and also in that facility that year was George Whitfield as our, our baseball coach, and then, uh, but Carson got killed in a car wreck Tuesday a week ago. But he also came to, that we did a hundredth anniversary, and Carson came was one of our speakers. Uh, but I thought it was sort of interesting that it's right when Richmond County Schools started as, as one of the principals, because, you know, at the time, we still had four, four high schools in the county, and he was one of those. So, it was interesting.
Thank you, Jerry.
Yeah, Mr. Jerry, I'd just like to just, you know, give some kudos to, I know we've had a lot of back-to-school supply drives, I know, um, I've, I've attended, uh, several of those, but I just wanna give kudos, like, uh, to churches, non-profit organizations, to individuals, um, that, um, participated in that. Um, even businesses, I, I know I went to one back-to-school drive where they were giving out supplies and even giving haircuts and, um, uh, hairstyles and things like that to help kids get ready for school, so just wanna say to, to those that participated with that, um, really appreciate that on behalf of, of myself and the board, so.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
I just wanna say thank you to nobody for looking at me when he said the word haircut.
See, I didn't even think about it. I, I was, I was done with it, I was done with it.
I know, I wanted to get this, there was one more shot.
I understand. Anybody else?
Well, I've been to lots of events, and I, as I've said, while in our meeting, um, just that, just makes me happy to know that our community is supporting us, and I see a lot of it, which I saw today. We had our, um, educational foundation meeting today, with, uh, it is up and running, and it's started a new year, I think we'll be very successful, and, um, I appreciate them for their, um, contribution to our, um, me, um, meet, first, the meeting teachers, the convocation, I couldn't think of the word convocation, but got lots of good reports from that, and anyhow, they already started looking at what they're gonna do this coming year, and, um, three new members, and we had like twelve, thirteen members here today, so it's off to a good start.
And Taylor called me as soon as she left the meeting, and she said that she was really excited about being on the foundation, and she was excited, and she said, thank Babysu, because she even called your name out and said that she was glad you were part of that, that foundation.
She will be a asset to our, to our community.
Yep.
Board.
Yeah, board.
Anybody else?
Let me say one more thing, I, I wanna say, say thank you, Dr. Farrell. I think it was August twenty-third, we had the prayer walk for the, the school system, and we had, uh, I think this year there were seventeen different churches represented, uh, BS was there, Babysu was there, and, uh, we had, uh, probably two hundred people that came and walked over to campuses and prayed, and, you know, when we have tragic situations happen, you realize how important it is that people are praying for Richmond County Schools all the time for what, what people have to go through nowadays in life. Thank you, Dr. Farrell.
There's more community support, Jerry. Community support there.
And I just wanna thank Dr. Farrell's team, all the administrators, all the teachers, all the employees of Richmond County Schools, it's been another fantastic opening, and, uh, driving around, campuses look great, so thank you to Mr. King and his staff. So, uh, everything's rocking and rolling, and get ready for Halloween already.
Very true.
Dr. Farrell, your comments?
So, um, I'll start out by saying, um, Mr. Gerard Morrison was here earlier, I see that he has left now, but he asked that we introduce, or to announce that the Seventeenth Annual John Coltrane Music Edutainment Festival would be taking place on Saturday, October fourth, from twelve noon until five P M. And that's at nineteen thirty-five, is it Gaio Osborne Road in Hamlet? Is that right? Okay, so, um, since he was not able to announce that, he asked that we do that. Um, and yes, we've had a great start to the, to the school year, and so that's a, a very exciting thing. And student advisory meetings have already started, I'm already, um, working with our students to, um, improve schools, um, for them. Had a great meeting with the LJ Bell staff this week to go through the PowerPoint that Ashley Dennis presented to the board, give them an opportunity to ask any questions that they had about, uh, the potential for the grant and, and the construction that would, um, then come from that, and then, um, I wanted to, I've, I've included this in your, uh, weekly messages, but I wanna make sure I remind everyone and just kinda share information and answer any questions that you have about the September twenty-ninth, um, uh, visit with our state superintendent, Mr. Mo Green. He'll be in the area, we're gonna start out at Richmond that day, give him an opportunity to see how the board and the staff here chose to spend Esser funds, um, and on some, on new construction, and then, um, take him over to RCC, and he'll get an opportunity to see what's going on with our Early College, he'll get an opportunity to see what's going on with the, the Rick Hendrix facility, and also, there will be, um, some people from the county and potentially people from Amazon just talking about how they will, you know, come into the community and do things to support, um, schools and connect with schools, so that'll be a really um, exciting event. He's, he'll be here, we're gonna start at Richmond at eight fifteen, and, um, we'll wrap up in the RCC Cafe probably around eleven-thirty, eleven-forty-five, and then he will head, um, on to another county to do an afternoon event. But I was excited that we were chosen as one of the first groups in the sand hills for him to, to come visit, so thank you to those who are helping get that done, and then, you know, it's really, it's always really nice to hear um, the great things that are going on for our, for the children in this community. I know you look at that report card that Dr. Smith shared, and some of those statistics don't look very good, um, and I just want you all to know, and I, and I know you know this already, but just to be reminded that there are a lot of people in this school district working really hard to counteract some of those things that our children are dealing with, and you know, James Johnson's talking about the things that are going on with athletics, and I said this in one of your recent, um, in one of your recent, uh, weekly updates, you know, you all should be really proud of that stadium and the way things look and the work that's being done at some of our other schools, just to make sure that, um, that we're putting our best face out there for the community, and then, of course, great things like this, um, you know, the community schools model that's coming to Washington Street, what a great opportunity that is, and then the Wingate Scholarship, obviously, I mean, that's life-changing for, for some of these children that wouldn't have an opportunity to go to college, so you know, thank you to Kate for her work with both of those things, you know, Julian, with his work with James Johnson and, um, athletics and all that, and to, to other members of our staff, doing all the things for all the children as much as we can, so, um, anyway, just a couple of things to point out to you, it's nice to, it's nice to hear those, those things when you're already dealing with the day-to-day, you know, that comes up in a school district, but, um, lots of great things happening here, so a lot to be proud of and a lot to look forward to, so, thank you for that.
Dr. Farrell, oh, do we still have the diamond crew at the high school that Jim, Jim Butler started? You know, I think Wiley May was a part of it, where you have those volunteers that come in and help, um, Cori-
They're monitoring hallways.
Monstrosity always, that's still-
It's still going on, I think.
It's still going on?
TK Thrall is the one that goes over there on a regular basis.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and of course, we are, we have a, I don't know if you all are, you're probably aware of this, or, or maybe have forgotten, but, you know, we have, um, a couple of employees who um, kinda roam the halls over there too quite a bit, and help keep things under control, and, um, just to provide a presence, and, because sometimes it's just, you know, I, I said to someone the other day, you know, a police officer sitting on the side of the road, even though I might not get a ticket, but he causes me to slow down.
That's right.
So, sometimes it's just that presence that makes a, makes a difference, so, yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Farrell. I need a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to General Statute one four three three one eight eleven A one and A to discuss personnel. Have a motion by Mr. Etheridge, a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Ornsby, in discussion. All of everybody saying aye. All opposed? We are now in closed session. We are now in closed session.